Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pinetop Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum and a full house. It's nice to have everybody here. I'd ask you to please make sure your cellphones are silenced before we start the meeting tonight. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Diane.
If you're so inclined, please bow your heads and pray with me. God, Father, great spirit, as we begin this meeting, we do so by coming to you with praises and thanksgiving. We first want to thank you for our freedom to meet together in this room as issues pertaining to our great cities are discussed. That is a freedom that many in this world do not have. We also want to give you thanks for Detective Ricky Bunch, Sheriff Jordan Smith, Deputy Sean Hayes, Grayson Hirmuth, Keith Plumpton, and Audrey Woods. Thank you for the many ways each one of them have protected and served the citizens of Pinetop and Navajo County. Would you watch over all of our first responders and protect them as they protect us? Lastly, we thank you for our council members as well as all those who assist in making decisions that impact this community. We ask you for your guidance and your grace upon each one of them as they give it their time and energy to make Pinetop and Lakeside the cities that they are. Please be with us during this meeting. Help us to listen to each other well, and if needed, help us to agree to disagree with grace and harmony. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Diane, as always. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Item B on our agenda tonight is call to the public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard and individuals are limited to three minutes. I have no requests for anybody to speak. Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and move on then to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion unless a member of the town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence as listed unless called out of sequence. We have three items on our consent agenda. Any questions or comments in the council? I entertain a motion then, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item. After the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff, any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor anytime. Item D1 is a presentation of public service awards and the Patriot Pen Award from VFW Post 2364. I'd like to invite George Baum and John Beeler to the podium. And whomever else needs to assist.
I'd like to start off, Madam Mayor, by what I always do in this, thanking you and your council for the support that you all give to the veterans of foreign wars in your town. I've belonged in a lot of different towns across the state and across the country, and you don't even come close. You're far superior to any of them, so you ought to give yourselves a good pat on the back for that. But tonight, we're here to present some awards for law enforcement officer, firefighter, EMT, and then we have a special award that we'll get to when we're done. But I'd like to start off by having Detective Ricky Bunch from the Pinetop Lakeside Fire Department. What did I say? Well, maybe he's both. I'm sorry, Police Department.
So we got, that's the camp. Oh, we'd like to present this to you. It's law enforcement officer, a law enforcement award presented to Detective Ricky Bunch.
My Pinetop Lakeside Police Department in grateful recognition of unyielding endurance to the highest levels of law enforcement in maintaining and preserving and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens, and as five veterans of foreign war post 2364. Thank you. This one I'll try to get right. Deputy Sheriff Jordan Smith with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
That's the camp. That's where I have to. That's what the guy going.
Detention Deputy Sheriff Sean Hayes, also from the Navajo County Sheriff's Office. Firefighter. Smith, fire math from the Pinetop Fire District. I'll read this one. It's firefighter award presented to Grayson and Hyer Smith, Pinetop Fire District. In special recognition and highest praise for alertness, personal courage, and ever vigilant guardianship of life and property. Thank you. The next award goes to Keith Plumpton, also from the Pinetop Fire District. Sable award, but this is a paramedic award for the EMT, so thank you very much for your service. The next award we're going to hand out, normally we don't do it here. We do it over at our school, but there was a snafu in letting people know that she won, and she wasn't down to Casa Grande to the banquet to get her award down there. So we're going to present it here. I almost think this is a better place to do it. Who does she know in Casa Grande? It's up here where she knows her. But anyhow, what her award is, we call it the Patriots' Pen, and it's a national Veterans of Foreign War program they do every year. And every year, they come out with a different topic or title, and it's a written essay. They have to handwrite it. And over at Blue Ridge Junior High School, 94 students applied, which I think is very, very good. The theme this year was my pledge to our veterans, and she wrote a very nice essay. The way this works is the post judges, and they come up with winners, and depending on how many entries you had determines how many you can send up to the next level. The next level is the district, and that's kind of six posts that kind of are in the same area. And then from there, it goes to state, and then from state, it goes to national, and they come out with a national winner. So that's kind of how it works. This year, the winner of the Patriots' Pen Award, and Mayor, if I could approach, I got a little brochure just so you guys know a little bit more about it. Like I said, there were 94 entries, and she came out. She was fourth at our post, but she came out first at the district and then fourth at the state. So she did pretty good. So at this time, I'd like to have Audrey Woods come forward.
Thank you for having me from the district. And there's a check with money. Thank you for doing it. Do it again next year. Next year? Huh? No, you stand over here. We'd like to get your picture.
Audrey Bunch, you got a check. What I told everybody over at your school, you may have heard me, is I told them, cash it within 60 days, otherwise it turns into confetti. Last but not least, we also have some people here tonight that actually did the judging for the Patriots' Pen. And we have, I know I'm going to butcher this one, but Mackenzie.
Vishnay.
Thank you. Could you come forward, please? We have a certificate for you. Then we have Alana Jackson, but I believe she's not here this evening.
She works. Could we give it to you, please?
And last but not least, Lynn Kriegbaum.
Thank you, Lynn, for being a judge. We really appreciate it.
I enjoyed it.
Always next year.
And I think that does it.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody.
Sure.
I'm the chairman of the board with George as commander, so we did it this way. But we, we do it every year, but the reason we did Patriots' Pen here tonight is we normally, we did it at the junior high school in 27, because that's where they want to do it. We always use the voice of the law advocacy here, but we had no entries from Blue Ridge High School this year. Mike Wright, the superintendent, promised me we would have them next year. So we're looking forward to that, and the people in attendance would really appreciate you coming and helping us honor our law in fire and in paramedics and EMT and district. They do a great job. We've been doing it for a lot of years, and we appreciate it. For the, and the judges that are part of. Three people in the town that have become part of our post programs, and we really appreciate that verbally. Just, and don't forget our comrades in arms, our trooper here. Al, this is Al Jones. Get up, stand. He's the past commander of the post, I think, four or five times, because we only have 64 people in our post. So if you want to join the VFW, get a hold of us. This is Terry Kreider, who's our Marine. This is Tim Duwey. He's a new one, and he's Army. This is Walker Case. He's been our commander for four times, I think. He's a trustee now. Let all my clutches, once we get our claws in, we don't let go. So anyway, thank you, everybody. If anybody wants to take your group picture, they're all. Thanks a million to everybody out there. We did this across America in our post. We do it here, we do it at the Pinetop Lakeside Cemetery, the Burn Cemetery, Ludgeriessen Cemetery, Alpine Cemetery, and also for Apache Indian Revolution. This is my last year of doing it. He's doing it next year. So he gets to collect all the money and raise all the money to buy the ring, so.
My wife will take care of most of it.
Anyway, he's Navy.
Yeah, Navy. And I was on the tax above these other.
Before you guys run off, I would just like to thank George for his kind comments to the council. We truly appreciate the partnership we have with you, our local posts of VFW, and we look forward to continuing that. So thank you.
You know, Mayor, I've told many people this, because the town was formed in August of 84. Our post was instituted in January of 85. You've been, you've been 150% of all town council members.
It's our pleasure and privilege. Thank you, John. And congratulations to all the recipients. Thank you. Just wait a moment. No intermission. Wait a moment. Okay, folks, we'd like to continue our meeting. Okay, it was nice to have a full house tonight, but I think we'll try to continue with our meeting. Item D2 on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. Consider the approval of resolution number 23-1655 and ordinance number 23-457 amending Town Title IX Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare by adding Chapter 9.20 Weapons. Chief Arms.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We're bringing this ordinance to you tonight because we've had several inquiries through the Police Department over the years and with the staff of the town inquiring about regulations relating to discharging a weapon in the town limits and also carrying of firearms in public establishments and at public events. So we decided to build this ordinance and include it and get it before council for review. This basically reflects everything that's in state statute, pretty much. So there's no deviance from that. So it's easier, we believe, that for people to access this, through our ordinance, to get information as to what's allowed and what's not allowed. So I'm happy to answer any questions relating to this if you have any.
Okay. Excuse me, Jeremiah, could you go shut the door, please? Thank you. Little bit, Brian. We'll just shut the door. You guys can continue out in the hallway. Okay, I apologize for interrupting you, Chief. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Counselor Snitzer?
Just, just a comment. This, this issue about taking their guns and storing them, I'm on the board of the Arizona Historical Society, and we had, we had the same issue. We didn't implement what we talked about yet because we shut down with COVID, but our concern was about when a person turns in a gun. And we finally decided that what we wanted to have were lockers, kind of like the post office has. So the person, none of our employees would handle the weapon. The person would put the weapon in the locker and take a key, and there was a master key, but none of the people at the desk had the master key. That was the, the director of the museum site. So the person put their weapon in, the person took their weapon out, and that was under a surveillance camera. So our worry was somebody could claim that they'd turned in a gun and it disappeared, and it was stolen by the employees and all. So we, we, we might want to think about giving people some kind of advice, whatever makes, I'm sure, you know, more about this than I do, whatever makes sense to protect the establishment from claims that a weapon was taken.
Absolutely. And the Police Department can help out with that. We, we have the process in place at the Police Department. We offer the same boxes, issued keys, and all that. So we'll be happy to help people through that process.
Okay.
Counselor Brimhall.
Question on this then. So you mentioned a public, like a public event. So is that like the balloon fiesta? Is it anything, are those considered public events then?
I would say anything that requires a permit through the town for, for a public event would qualify for that.
So those lock boxes would have to go to each event?
Correct, yes.
Okay. How do you enforce that? Like, how do you enforce an individual from walking into a, especially at the, at the boom fiesta where you have, I don't know how many areas you can get into it, how do you, how are you able to enforce this, this law or this code?
Well, if it's at a, if it's at a public event, that would be on the sponsor of the event to provide that. They'd have to man that, make sure it's secure while those weapons are stored there, and they're enjoying the event. And then there has to be somebody there when they come out to retrieve those at all times. So if it's for a, a public establishment like Town Hall or the Police Department, we have to provide those to the community.
Okay, okay.
But this says here in section 9.20.040 that you may be required to, it doesn't say shall. So it's at the discretion of the event.
It's at the discretion of, of the public establishment or the sponsor of the event. They don't have to do it if they don't want to.
Vice Mayor.
Just some questions. I had a couple of last minute calls on this, and I think I explained it, but let me make sure. So even someone who may have the permit to carry still at these public forums and generally, I mean, what I've been exposed to was they would have metal detectors and, and you would, before that, you would place your gun in a lock box before you went into the event. I mean, there's several down in the valley. And which was, which would include off duty police officers and those kinds of things as well.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm just, is that right, what I?
Correct.
Okay. Like James, I do see it would be difficult at an open event like the balloon festival to really enforce that, but, or even repeat everybody to know that that's the, you know, the code if they're not familiar with it. But as, as the mayor pointed out, it says may, not shall.
Yeah. If they do decide to enforce it, they'd have to, you know, probably post that information up at the entrances so that everybody's aware of that before they came in. Most likely, if we did find somebody in there, we, we, you know, try and ask them to, you know, please abide by the, the rules that they've established there and go from there. You know, if someone didn't want to abide by it, then we take it further from there.
Okay.
So this is more of a tool to give you and your officers something to refer back to when you're enforcing these things? Because I think we've had some weapons discharged in town limits, and there were some questions.
Yes. Yeah, it gives us a little more leverage, you know, to, a little more authority to work under those weapons violations that do occur in the town.
Any other, yes, Counselor Brimhall?
You mentioned, so on like the purpose of it, to protect the health, safety, welfare visitors, what is currently in place? Like, how, I mean, how would this code improve that? Like, what's, what's currently missing out? And then what's the need for this code?
The main purpose of it is just information so people understand what's in the actual written laws and the ARS laws in the town, to be aware of what they can and cannot do in town limits. So if people are more aware of what they can and cannot do, it's going to provide more safety for our citizens.
Okay.
You know, they may not be aware of something, and they're just, they're out shooting a weapon in their backyard, and, you know, hopefully they'll be able to, you know, before they do that, look at, look at our town ordinance, see what's allowed and what's not allowed versus trying to go find that in, in our ARS codes. So I think it's going to be easier for people to be more informed through this ordinance than not, so.
Counselor Hauser?
The only question I had was why we chose to use the words peace officer on duty rather than just peace officer, or a peace officer that's willing to display an ID, for example. I know, I think he just kind of touched on permits. Concealed carry, I assume, is what we're talking about, but I, I just wondered why we chose to use that language instead of just police officer.
We can, we can definitely modify that. We just chose to do on duty. Because sometimes they'll call into question, you know, what about, you know, if we're doing this, what about our police officers carrying their weapons in town? Because we can by authority, but. And it doesn't really apply. Can you ask that again? You're talking about off duty?
Exactly. Like, I, I guess, in my opinion, I kind of feel like a lot of our police officers would, you know, encounter a violent situation on or off duty. They are still going to take action as sworn police officers for the town of Pinetop Lake said. So I, I guess I just don't understand why we chose to put on duty in there rather than just police officers.
See what you're saying? Yeah. That's something we can modify. It, you know, it doesn't have to be that exact wording.
Counselor Brimhall?
But kind of going back to, I guess, Tabor's point, and the Stilling's point, I guess, is police officers will have to, off duty police officers will have to still abide by this, though, right? But then, but Tabor just said that they're, they're supposed to enforce it, or they're supposed to be protective, so they should have the weapon? I'm just, I may, I may have missed that.
It's just because it says any person other than a police officer on duty. I don't like the word on duty. I would just like to have it say police officer. I would just like to have it say police officer.
Oh, got it, okay.
Right? So that they, that a police officer could carry their weapon at any time. I think they still can if they had a concealed weapons permit.
Yes.
But if they didn't, then they would be under this to the same rule of public.
Okay.
I guess one question I would pose to Dan in this is, you know, there are businesses out there where they have a sign that says no weapons permitted. So if it's at the mall, it could be at the movie theater. And so I, I think this is stipulating that a law enforcement officer that's on duty is able to go pa, you know, still carry in there. Is this, so my question to Dan, is this the way the state law, state statute reads also? Or i- in a similar fashion? Because I guess, so my question would be, is, is an off-duty officer, according to state statute, allowed to still carry in a facility, a business that has a sign out front that says no weapons allowed? So they're not? Because even with a concealed carry permit, you still can't carry in that, in that business, so.
It doesn't read anywhere in statute that it applies specifically to a police officer off duty, so there's a little bit of conflict there. So I didn't add that, that verbiage in there for an off-duty police officer.
Didn't we have an instance where one of our officers was off-duty having dinner with his family and he intervened in a violent situation?
Yes. Uh, no, not in that situation, no.
Vice Mayor?
I, I was just going to say, and I, I don't know what the statute, the state statute, but I do know, I mean, there's venues, again, that I've gone to in the valley where, again, as, as Keith pointed out, generally, if, if a business posts it, and any business, actually, it's my understanding, if they post no weapons, again, a police officer on duty has every right to go into that establishment armed. But anyone off-duty essentially would be just like anyone, anyone else and have to follow that if, if the business owner has asked them not to have a weapon in the, in the facility. And it's the same with some of the venues, again, that I've been to where they have the, the boxes up front and.
Yeah, I don't think they're exempt from it just because they're off-duty, so.
Oh, in other words, you feel that it needs to, the on-duty phrase needs to stay in this?
Yeah, that just specifies our on-duty officers.
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address us? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there further council discussion? Counsel Craigbaum?
I have a question about discharge of a weapon. How do you, I know it's a problem on New Year's. People think that's really neat to go out and shoot their gun or whatever. What do you do about that?
Obviously respond to a call for service that, you know, that we have weapons.
So somebody has to call you and say, somebody in my neighborhood is shooting a gun.
Well, we can initiate, if we're out in a neighborhood, we can initiate that ourselves if we view it, witness it, we can take action then.
And that's the way it's always been, isn't it?
We've got to track them down and prove that, you know, they fired it and have witnesses to that, so.
But this is not anything new, is, is my understanding, right? Okay.
Yes.
Just for clarification on the discharge, the way I read that still, it is legal to discharge a weapon as long as you meet the, you're a quarter of a mile away from any building where there might be somebody, is that right?
Yeah.
Even within the town limits, is that?
Correct. And that applies to the, the open season stuff related to game and fish.
Okay.
Yeah. With permission of the owner, that they're, that you're within that boundary of a quarter mile. Outside of that, it's, it's still a mile from any res, any structure, so.
Okay. And again, essentially, nothing has changed. It's, this is just now where people can see, see if you're where it is.
Basically reflects everything that's in Arizona revised statutes for weapons misconduct, which is under ARS thirteen thirty-one oh two, and discharge of a firearm under ARS thirteen thirty-one oh seven.
Thank you, Dan. Any other, Counsel Brimhall?
Sorry, I, I think, I'm having a hard time with the idea of, with, with the may, like, so like what Mayor said, may be required by the operator. If they're not, if they're not, if they don't have to, then they may, they choose that. It's hard, I, I feel like we should either, either make it a, a code where you have to enforce a public event or not even have it at all. I say that in the sense of, like, are the guidelines of how you enforce that for any public events? Like, for an individual who holds an event, what guidelines do I have to have to make sure that I, I am actually following the code? Is there a specific lockbox that I have to have? How many, like, a whole bunch of more requirements to show that I am following this code if I choose to follow it? Like, I think, I just feel like we're missing something more if we include the, the public just because it's so, it's so broad and has so many ins and outs that, that we don't know what's going to happen to that, to the event.
ARS doesn't specify what type of secure storage is required for a, a public event. That's just required, that's just, something is placed on the sponsor if they want to enforce that, whether that be set of lockers or vehicle, you know, whatever that can be secured and it's attended at all times. And when a person wants to come and retrieve their weapons, somebody's there to give them to them, so. I don't think we have any authority on that at all. That's just, you know, a reflection of, of a state statute, so.
Okay.
And again, they, state statute only, you know, states it. They want to enforce it, they can. If not, then they can let people in with weapons, so.
Just another question, Chief. So thinking about that, yeah, so since it says may, I mean, it's kind of up to the event organizer to decide if they want to do that. I would suggest if they do, they should put up a sign that says no weapons here. I mean, otherwise, people just don't know. And, and that also brings into play, I mean, since Arizona also is, well, it's, I mean, anybody can conceal carry, but also anybody can open carry here. So if you have people walking around at that event with open carry, if, I mean, I, I guess I'm just asking for some clarification there. If the event organizer hasn't said one way or the other, are they in violation of the statute? They're not, right?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that, so I entertain a motion?
Just one thing to add that to it, too. We have events that are held in our, in our parks in town. We still have additional ordinances that don't allow firearms or anything in our parks. That's an additional layer of things that the town can enforce. If an event is not on a town piece of property or something, that's up, again, that's up to the sponsor of an event, whether they want to allow open carry and other weapons in there, so.
No further clarification. I entertain a motion on this item then. Counsel Heisler?
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-three sixteen fifty-five and ordinance number twenty-three four fifty-seven amending the town code Title Nine Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare by adding Chapter nine point two zero Weapons. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Moving on to item D three, which is a public hearing and consider repealing ordinance number fourteen dash three eighty-four and replacing it with Resolution number twenty-three dash sixteen fifty-seven and ordinance number twenty-three dash four fifty-eight updating Title Seventeen, Chapter fifteen point twelve Flood Plane Regulations. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I was contacted in October, I believe, by, on the behest of the State Flood Plane Administrator, and he requested that we update our flood plane regulations. And so this, what's driving it is an update at the state level. And so they looked through ours and they identified several issues. Some of them, for instance, they identi, the way that we identified special flood hazard areas didn't marry up with the language at the federal level, so they had us go through and identify everything instead as a special flood hazard area, which is the SF HA acronym that FEMA uses. So I think it's really just for clarity, since I was in there, I, I took the liberty to go ahead and try to make that a little more readable and a little more grammatically correct, so there's a, a bunch of grammar changes in there as well. Some of the other, one of the other things they did, they asked that we redefine how we define an accessory structure to make that a little more clear and to match up with the federal language. They added some penalties, and that's why it's in the ordinance, because we had to have that in the ordinance and not just in the resolution, because it has penalties associated with it. But they're just basically, that we could have monetary penalties or they could be non-monetary if it served the community. And the other thing was engineered openings, how we define those and we end to more detail. So are there any questions for me on the flood plane regulations? Basically, it's just a clean sweep of the old and out with the old and with the new.
Vice Mayor?
So just to be clear, now we're in conformity with both FEMA and with the state guidelines?
That's correct. And so one of the, the key aspects is that we're a member, our community is a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, the NFIP, and so people in the community can obtain flood plane insurance. And so this keeps us in the NFIP in compliance.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion, questions, or a motion on this item? Counsel Craigbaum?
I was a little puzzled on, doesn't have a page reference, it's fifteen dash, fifteen dot twelve dash zero seven zero. And at the very end of that, it says that the FIS and the FIRM panels are on file at the Town Pinetop Lakeside Community Development Department. I'm wondering if we should see these?
You're more than welcome to. I do have them. The first one's the flood insurance study. It's a detailed engineering analysis of our studied floodways. And the actual firm is a basic, is a duplicate copy of what is the currently adopted flood insurance rate map for our area and our community. I have both of those if you, if you'd like.
So just any time?
Yeah, nothing's changed on those.
Okay.
We did, Matt and I worked on, or we had some conversation with FEMA, and they were doing some background work, and they asked us what other areas they wanted to look at. And we identified some areas along Billy Creek. What else, what else was there, Matt? I think there was another one. Was it over?
Billy Creek and then over here on the road.
Right. Right at the park to see if there was some way that we could look at that area as well.
The part that's behind the dam?
Right. But all that's not related to this, not directly related to this, but it could change the flood insurance rate map in the future.
Okay. And I have another question, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
No, I just had it and it's gone. Oh, yes, Billy Creek. If someone places a levee, an obstruction to the flow of water so that they can make a little pond, people like to do that, is, is there any way to, is this really addressed that?
It does, yeah.
So that, yeah, and?
That's considered, believe it or not, it's considered a waterway of the US because it leads to the Colorado.
Right. It's flowing water.
To the Colorado. And so you actually, to do that legally, you'd need a 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. You'd have to show Zero Rise certification. So part of the penalties in this addresses that. If it's done, the Flood Plane Advisory Board, which is the town council acting as, that could make an assessment on it. And also, I, I would advise that we would take action on it because if I became aware of it, because it is a violation of the NFIP and our flood plane.
It can't be, it can't be because of beavers, but, but if a person puts an obstruction so that it makes a pond, that's a.
So it is actually a.
Something we can do something about, right?
It's actually illegal already in, in our ordinance for modifications to a flood plane or a floodway, yes.
Because we have a mile of trail that goes right along beside Billy Creek that the town has for a dollar a year maybe or something with the county. It's county land.
Correct.
Instead of being private property. And sometimes people along that area would put, make a pond and maybe they want to catch fish. I don't know what, you know, why they do that, but, but I know that that has happened in the past. And if they make it so that the water is too high in that area, our, our trail is going to be impacted, so.
So this is, this makes it actually a class-two misdemeanor to do that, what you just described.
Okay.
Every day that, that's, that, that, they do not mitigate that as a class-two misdemeanor. And we can assess a civil penalty, a dollar value or something else if you guys wanted to move forward with.
Community service or something like that.
Your service, whether you remove it, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you entertain a motion on this item then?
I'll make a motion.
Counsel Heisler?
I move to repeal ordinance number fourteen three eighty-four and replace it with Resolution number twenty-three sixteen fifty-seven and ordinance number twenty-three four fifty-eight, Chapter fifteen point one two Flood Plane Regulations, thereby updating said regulations to reflect the amendments made by the state flood plane manager to the state's model ordinance.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve this item. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah. Appreciate your work on this. Item D four pursuant to ARS thirty-eight point four three one point zero three A three and A four, the council may vote to enter into executive session. Upon a public majority vote of members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session for the following reasons. Three is discussion or consultation for legal advice with and to give direction to an attorney or attorney of the public body. And four, discussion or consultation with the attorneys of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding a public body's position regarding contracts that are subject of negotiation, impending or contemplated litigation or settlement discussions conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigations. On this item is a discussion and legal advice and direction regarding a lawsuit personal injury claim filed against the town. Do I have a motion? Counsel Heisler?
I move to go into executive session.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to enter executive session. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We will adjourn and return.